Your Excellency's distinguished ladies and gentlemen.
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Uh-huh. The moment we've been waiting for is here.
You know, they said that it looked like a rally, but it's a town hall meeting.
Testing the microphone.
Testing, so Jagabah, sir, we are sorry that it's a rally, but it is a town hall meeting.
And we have a way of doing things very special.
Special, so we're going to invite him on stage.
Uh-huh.
And it's a town hall rally.
You know.
It's a town hall rally.
Town hall rally.
A town hall rally in Kalaba.
With just a test microphone.
Just to test the microphone.
We never pass.
New year, we know what's in there.
When you return, Your Excellency.
Uh.
You'll, you know, but at this point, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to invite.
Very respectfully.
By the grace of God, most incoming president.
President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria.
His Excellency.
Senator Bola Ahmed Tinubu Di Jagabah. Kalaba, make some noise! City boy, every local one, father of God.
APC. Cross Rivers. This ring stakes. Please have your seat. Our vice presidential candidate. Senator. Gajim Shetiman. Extremely hardworking, forthright, and highly intelligent. This national chairman of our party. He'll be represented by the National Vice Chairman in the South. Victor Yedum. Your Excellency, my friend. A professor. I don't want to call him. The same name my late mother called professors. I will keep it a secret until another time. Your Excellency, Governor Professor Ben Ayade. They say. Perhaps. Education is the greatest tool against poverty. Some nations have not seen that happen. They say generally, some. There are many educated relics. But they're not here. But we have one man. Highly educated, committed, resourceful, and absolutely loyal to his own people. And he has made that people a program of people first, that Ben Ayade. I want to say thank you. I've enjoyed stimulating entertainment, culture, and valuable reception. Call it whatever name it is. Whether town hall rally, town hall meeting, town hall mini-mat. It's a town hall meeting of the mind and brain ambition put in one. Your Excellency, the Governor of Platinum State. And the Director General of the APC Campaign. Organization. This is about alone. Well, there are two of them short. A physical height. And they are sitting together today. But I always say, no matter how short a body is. Looking now, he will be able to see this car. These are great skyline of our party. Short, but highly intellectual and highly intelligent and very highly committed. I thank both of you put together. The Chairman APC Cross Rivers. Auga. Egba, ah, Eba. The National Working Members here present. Former Governors here present. Senator Florent Itagua. You are so committed. They receive you, Mama Babacasi. Mama everything. I was there, mother. Even if we say, "Mother Teresa," we cannot be wrong. Thank you for your effort. Thank you for your dedication, patriotism, and commitment to humanity. God bless you. All other women here, you have somebody to emulate. God bless all of you. The woman leader. Who had demonstrated professional intelligence. The capacity to debate and talk sense on the world stage. She made case for Nigeria. Health care program. It's a forte. Beauty, brain are not a beast. Thank you very much. Well, let me now say, do one thing I usually don't. I want to put my friend on the spot. Senator John Eno, please stand up. Where are you? Please come up. Jagabah Awaneno. Barista Mary Ekere.
Jagabah. A father in Emilio. A daddy indeed.
You and I, we didn't start today, we didn't start yesterday. We've been great friends. We have always share one common thing. Progressive thinking and capacity to change the dynamics of regression. You, Senator John Eno. No matter what degree of anger. We are bound to be angry one way or the other. We're bound to be disappointed. As long as our human being lives. We are bound to have our regrets. But abandoning our people and cause and determination to make progressive. And then leave with the people's. Commitment is not what you have for. I saw you at the airport and I beg you, and I'm begging you publicly, let it end. Let it end.
City boy, a father in Emilio.
I come back or don't come back, please withdraw from blow suit. I know you can never be satisfied with everything and life, life in itself. Who knows that I will be here today? Please, let us end it.
Singing together, one love. One heart, let's get together, be alright. And it doesn't ever be long, so surely be alright. We pray and praise to the Lord and I will be alright. Let's get together, be alright. Let's sing it together, one love. One heart, let's get together, be alright. And it doesn't ever be long, so surely be alright. We pray and praise to the Lord and I will be alright. Let's get together, be alright.
That will have been. That will have been the end of my speech. Because I know how we have it in the bag. We have those two. The flame, the balloon of anger. Get ourselves together. Get determined. It is a joy being here. The land of history. The land of people. People with great generosity. Yes. Who is here? Who would say, yes, he or she has never been disappointed before? We are all being disappointed, one way or the other. I won't go back to the history of our forefathers. I'm a forward four-wheel driver. I don't want to go backwards. Progressive driving Nigerian forward. Is the only reason why I'm running. No other person is running like me. They have no facts. They have no experience. They have no track record. They have no degree of honesty. They can't keep their promises. They resort to insults and abuses. To the track, no. It doesn't catch me. To divert, they say, no, I'm from Tinubu Squaw. To wrestle, I'm a wrestler, but I don't wrestle with the big. What is my concern is development of Nigeria. Individually. This is a talented country. God bless this country. It is our own fault. If past seventy years, sixty years, we've not made the necessary progress we ought to have achieved. Telling the past story is gone with the wind. Moving the Nigerian forward is a task that must be done. Anger will not stop it. Diversion will not stop it. Breaking apart will not stop it. It is only togetherness. By building a team of intellectuals. Brilliant minds, great thinkers. Good visioners, that we can build a country. Other nations of the West, America fought battles. At the same time that they were fighting a civil war, they were building their rail lines. At the same time that they were fighting a civil war, they were able to feed themselves. What are we talking to ourselves about? Kasaba. Miss. Agbado. It is now a problem to even grow granite. What is wrong with us? Let us conquer anger. Anger can not conquer us. Let's put together. And make great wealth of God-given space. Land of opportunity. We fight, we break pipelines. We waste our oil, polluted our water, and poisoning all the fish and the meat that we will use. As means of livelihood. Are we not the one fighting ourselves? Are we not the one destroying ourselves and environment? God gave us mud ranch. God gave us waterfront. He gave us Kalaba port, deep sea port, infrastructure road, a shiny city on the hill. A great topography. The valley of joy and love. The waterfront. That can beat Miami. No weather disaster. Except human being being its own enemy. The ability to think, the ability to do it, we have it. And we will do it in Cross Rivers, in our lifetime. Why not the scenic Katuranch? Why not make Kua Waterfalls? And change Cross River National Park? As magnificent locations to make money and great, do great jobs and make money for these states? What are we doing? These places are calling on us to be inspired, to dream big, to be determined. Now we can. And we are the only ones to change our fortune. We come to make a promise. To work with the governors. To easily link the seaport to the other part of Nigeria. To fabricate goods, fabricate items. We can think beyond the hole and cutlass. We can mechanize our farms. We can engineer the capacity to develop good, great things. Professor Governor Ayade is working with other governors. After this election, we will know how many are progressive, but we will stay in majority. Who be damned silly. Uh, am I lying? Am I lying? Raise your hands up if you know it is the truth. You have PPC, you are going to vote, you will vote APC, you will win for Cross Rivers. You will win for APC, you will win for Nigeria. God bless you.
Thank you very much.
God bless you. God bless Nigeria. God bless Cross Rivers. We will keep our promises to you. We will work together transform this state, bring back prosperity. The renewed hope is here like a rock of Gibraltar. God bless you.
We'd like to invite him to please take his seat. Jang Aba. We now like to invite his excellency, the digital governor of Cross River State. We'd like to invite...
Thank you very much. We go into the question and answer. Ladies and gentlemen, everybody said, "God bless Ashiwaju." Thank you very much for the unity, love, that we present here today. We're going to the Q and A session and I'm going to call on, first and foremost, Ashiwaju is the City Boy. I'm going to have you say, "City Boy!"
City Boy! City Boy! City Boy!
Women!
City Boy!
He can hear you!
City Boy!
Are you City Boys?
City Boy! City Boy! City Boy! City Boy! City Boy!
And now, let's welcome our Golden Boy. Ladies and gentlemen, incoming Vice President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Golden Boy!
Golden Boy! Golden Boy! Golden Boy! Golden Boy!
Yes, sir!
Golden Boy!
Yes, sir!
Golden Boy! Golden Boy! Golden Boy! Golden Boy!
And also to join them, our amiable Director General, a perfect gentleman, ladies and gentlemen, His Excellency, Governor Long of Plateau State. Make some noise! For the DJ of the campaign council, the Governor of Plateau. And representing our national chairman, our vice chairman, His Excellency, Mr. G...